Welcome, everyone. Before we begin tonight's meeting, we will have a prayer by Councilman Ken Hussey, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
As we gather here this evening, let us be mindful of the opportunities to serve our fellow citizens and our community. Let us keep in mind the enduring values of our community, putting our effort in those areas and those things upon which we can build with confidence. We are thankful for this day, its blessings, its opportunities, and certainly its challenges. We give special thought to those impacted by the flash flooding that took place in our community last night and this morning. May we be challenged to give our best always to our citizens and our community, and let us continue to strive to make Jefferson City a better place for all. Amen.
(affirmative) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Monday, August 1st, 2016, City Council meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mrs. Powell, roll call, please.
Branch Costalis.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Henry.
Hussey.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Schreiber.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Here.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Also, at this time at the beginning of the meeting, I would like to observe a moment of silence for former Councilman Dick Crater, who recently passed away. And at this time, we will observe a moment of silence. Thank you. And if you'll direct your attention to the screen, we do have a picture of Councilman Dick Crater, who served on the City Council from 1979 to 1981, and was also a city employee from 1982 to 2003. So, our sympathy goes to Mr. Dick Crater and his family. Thank you. Also, at this time, I'd like to recognize that any Boy Scouts that are in the audience, and I see that we do have a couple of you here tonight, and if you would like to come forward to the podium, you're welcome to say your name, and if you want to say what school you're going to, or if you're working on a badge, you're welcome to say that, too. So, if you'd like to come on up to the podium, we're glad to have you all here. We always enjoy having Scouts here. Welcome. So, you can just mention your name and what school you're from.
My name is Noah Voss, and I'm from Immaculate Conception. And we're working on the Citizenship and the Community Merit Badge.
Wonderful.
My name is Brady Voss, also from Immaculate Conception. We're both working on the same merit badge.
Great. Well, good luck with what you're doing, and we really appreciate having you here this evening. Thank you for coming. And also tonight, I would like to start by thanking our Police Department, Fire Department, and Public Works after the incredible amount of rain that we had last night and the flooding concerns. I know police and fire were called to several incidents, and with all the water over the roadways and water rescues and some of the issues that occurred last night. So, I do want to personally and on behalf of the city and council, thank your departments for all that you did last night. That was definitely a scary situation, and you all stepped up late at night and were able to step in and help. So, thank you for all of your continued hard work last night. Thank you. And I think that, was there another Boy Scout that came in? We do have another scout here. So, if you would like, we like to recognize our Scouts. Would you like to come up to the podium and tell us your name and what school you go And if you're working on a merit badge, you're welcome to mention that, too. Welcome.
My name is Mason Heckle. I go to Trinity Lutheran School, and I am working on my Communications Merit Badge.
Wonderful. Well, good luck with that, too. We're glad to have our Scouts here this evening. Thank you all for coming. Also want to mention that tonight is City Councilor Drew Hilpert's last meeting. So, I wanted to, first of all, thank you for all of your years of service. And I was fortunate to serve with you, and I was on the City Council for many years. So, I served with you for six years there, and now I've really enjoyed having you onboard in my first year as mayor. And you're very dedicated, and the city has definitely had you as quite an asset. There's a lot of projects that you have been integral in working on, and you will be greatly missed. But we're also very excited about the opportunities that are coming up now for you and your family. But really do appreciate all that you've done for the city of Jefferson. So, I'd like to give you a chance to say a few good words about the city.
Yeah, really, it's really been an honor for me to serve as City Councilor for the last five years, and before that as Associate for five years. So, you know, I really have, it's been a great experience. I've had a good time. Hopefully, made a good positive impact on things, or at least kept things moving when I could. So, I sincerely appreciate all of you all and all the staff that I got to work with, and the public, too, was always very generous to me. So, I just appreciate everything that everyone did for me, and hopefully, I did a good enough job, I guess. So, thanks.
Thank you. Well, Drew, you definitely did, and you were always very responsive and helpful, and even when it came to the fun things that we did at the city, I will say you were always one of the first to get in the dunking booth. I don't know if that was something you wanted to do, or if we just kind of made you do that. But you always were a good sport about everything. So, I do appreciate that, and wish you the best of luck in all of your future. So, thank you. All right. And we'll start now with Item 4, Miscellaneous Agenda Items. And we have a proclamation for the German Heritage Corridor. So, at this time, I would like to invite Mrs. Mara Gray to the podium, and you're welcome to come to the podium. And then I will read the proclamation. So, Mara, if you would like to tell us a little bit about yourself and the Missouri Humanities Council that you're with.
Sure. Thank you so much for having me. Again, my name is Mara Gray. I'm the Director of Public Relations for the Missouri Humanities Council. We have two office locations, one in St. Louis and one in Kansas City, but we are statewide nonprofit. And we do a lot of different heritage resource agendas. We work on different initiatives, and we have a Read From the Start program. We do all types of programming, but we were the major push behind the German Heritage Corridor designation that the legislature designated this year, which highlights Missouri's German heritage and kind of follows the German settlement along the Missouri River. And we greatly appreciate the city of Jefferson supporting us in that endeavor. And so, we were great that the governor finally signed it back on July 1st. So, thank you.
Wonderful. And I know you have an event coming up, and I believe it's August 10th. Do you want to tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah. So, the Missouri Humanities Council, next week, Wednesday, August 10th, is going to be sponsoring an event here in Jefferson City at the Mill Bottom. It's 400 West, right at the bottom of the Capitol, right next to Red Wheel Bike Shop. And we're going to be sponsoring an event from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. We're just going to have a pretty short agenda. We've got Gary Kramer, who is the State Historical Society Executive Director, coming in to be a guest speaker. We'll have the city proclamation on the agenda as well, and then a welcome speech. And Dostein House is catering, and it's free and open, so come and enjoy German food. And hopefully, we've got somebody coming in to play the button accordion, so just to kind of highlight and celebrate Missouri's German heritage. So, we welcome. It's open to the public, so.
Great. Well, we will look forward to celebrating with you, and I know we're very proud of our German heritage here in Jefferson City. And even though I'm Greek, I'm part German, I'd say, just because of what we have here in Jefferson City. I think we all are, whether we are or not, and this will be a great way to connect with the city's German heritage. So, I'll read the proclamation, and then afterwards, we'll get a photograph together with it. So, "Whereas, the city of Jefferson would like to join the Missouri Humanities Council in recognizing Missouri's rich German heritage by celebrating the official designation of Missouri's German Heritage Corridor. And whereas, a celebratory event will occur on the 10th of August in the year 2016 in Jefferson City. And whereas, the event will highlight Missouri's German culture and history along the Missouri River, recognizing the thousands of German immigrants that migrated to the state in the 1830s, bringing with them a distinct German culture, including wine and beer-making, agriculture, festivals, language, religion, architecture, and other customs that have left an indelible mark on both Missouri and the nation at large. And whereas, the city of Jefferson also pauses to recognize its longstanding relationship with its partner city, Menschburg, Germany. Therefore, I, Mayor Kerry Turgeon of the city of Jefferson, do hereby proclaim the city of Jefferson's recognition and support of the German Heritage Corridor of Missouri." So, it's my honor to present this proclamation, and if you'd want to come up, we'll get a picture together with it. All right. Thank you, Mara. And I should also mention that event also is beyond just Jefferson City. The Humanities Council is a statewide organization and has invited people from all over the state to attend this event. So, we're looking forward to hosting that here in Jefferson City, so hope the council can join us. Item 5, Public Hearings, there are none. Item 6, Appointments by the Mayor, there are none. Item 7, Presentations from Staff, Consultants, and Invited Guests. We do have one presentation this evening, Joe Wilson, and you're welcome to come to the podium. He is going to give us an update on the Missouri River 340 and the presentation of city coins to some of the paddlers. We will do that this evening. And I wanted to start by having Councilman Mahalovich give you a welcome.
Yeah, welcome, Joe. It wasn't too long ago when we were reminded that MR 340, the world's largest ultra marathon, was coming to our town through our city again and again and again. And so, it was with the mayor and the city administrator that we got some coins and some mayor's letter of congratulations to the first paddlers to make it to our city. So, Joe was our ambassador across the river and handed those out, and that's a little bit of part of what we're doing here tonight. Welcome, Joe.
We're glad to have you, Joe, and I understand you just celebrated a birthday, so we'll give you an official birthday welcome as well.
Thank you. Greetings. Can you hear me all right? Maybe it's my ears, I can't hear. I could talk about the river all day. Clayton here gave me the keys to this thing. You're probably going to find out why nobody rides with me the second time here. The MR 340, this is its 11th year. There was 400 boats, 550 people from 37 states and four countries. It is recognized as the longest, I think the toughest, in constant race across, in the country, in the world, a three-raise. We also have two other races over there that finish at Wilson-Serranelli Point. And let me clarify that, that's a nickname. There's nothing official about it. It's also known as WSP and probably a few other things. But we have two races, and Chris Wilson at CVB has set up two catfish tournaments this year. We had a couple last year, and I think he's zeroed in on what's going to be best for the community, because it involves children fishing tournaments at the same time. So, Clayton, watch me. Here we go. Hold on. I've already, oh, I'm good. Getting ready for the 340. It always gives me a great deal of pride to put the Jeff City flag out on the sandbar. That's the banner for the MR 340. You'll see a big barrel there and a tiki torch. We set those out to designate a particular landing area that I think is the best for them, so when they step out of a canoe or kayak, there are maybe six inches of water. You could almost say that's a man-made sandbar. So, we have the fire department on hand, as usual, and they represent the city. I'm just proud to see them. We did have an incident at 2:00 in the morning upstream, about two or three miles. They were there. The men, they received the call, spent two hours on the water. Fortunately, the young lady was all right. In the dark, you just don't know sometimes. They also, we had a shower, which you'll see, and we went through about 800 gallons of water, and I can assure you, we couldn't have hauled it over, but the fire truck hose really helped us out a lot. That was a big hit. There we go. This is getting ready again. You'll see the big log up there. We call Big Boy, a gift from the river, and American Water Stan. Nobody's showing up yet, but they do. I've had some problems with cameras, laptops, smartphones. For some reason, the water just doesn't agree with them, so I had to kind of hijack some pictures off of Facebook, the MR 340 Facebook. So, if I were to take a picture of every paddler that come in and try to show it to you, we'd be here all night. So, we're just showing you some of the highlights of when they arrive. We have a crew there on the sandbar to assist not only the paddlers, but to pull their craft up and get it out of the way for oncoming landings. I'm doing pretty good on the clicker. This was one of the particular attention, father and son, 11-years-old. They did 340 miles. And I really messed up. I really should have given that young fella a medallion from the city. But I've gotten contact with him, and we've got an upcoming race, so if the mayor doesn't mind, I'm going to give him a medallion when he gets back to Jeff City. Somebody gave me a shirt, but anyway, that's father and son coming in. Now, Dale Sanders there on the right, you can tell he's older than Connor, the young boy, the 11-year-old. He's 81-years-old. He just finished doing the whole tour, or the whole trip down the Mississippi River, as he says, "You're never too old." So, here we have an 81-year-old and 11-year-old that did the MR 340. The 81-year-old did it standing up on what we call a sup, stand-up paddle. He's a legend in his own time. The first person to reach the sandbar from the 8 o'clock, I'm sorry, the 7 o'clock group. There were two stages because of the numbers, 7 o'clock and 8 o'clock. 7 o'clock was solos, 8 o'clock was everything else. And that everything else was five, or six women from Texas who just flat cleaned everybody's plow. They passed the 7 o'clock. Never underestimate a woman, you know that. But anyway, he's from Maryland, and there I gave him his letter from the mayor and the medallion. The other two fellows, I, it's not a very good picture, but the one in the green, he had to pull out here in Jeff City because of back problems. And they were in the second group, so they got a medallion and a letter from the city. There was a lot of talk about that medallion there. Actually, the guy that was in the lead and they predicted the win, and he did it in his class, wanted to know how long he'd have to stay here to get that medallion, because he's a non-stop paddler. And I said, "I can have you in and out in 30 seconds," gave you a boost, but he didn't stop. I was there at 6:00 in the morning when he come by. Jeff City is, how can I say, is recognized in the 340 as the premier stop. They like Jeff City's hospitality. They also like Chick-fil-A. But everybody says you've got to get to Jeff City. This is what we call a stand-up paddler. He's leaving. These are some of the safety boats. There were 20 safety boats. They're spaced out among all of the paddlers. Safety is paramount. Sleep is short, so you grab it where you can. There's a hammock up in the trees, a couple on the ground. I don't know what this picture was taken of. This is looking down into the parking area. You can see the flags. I might just make a note on those, if I could back up. How about that? The flags represent the seven states that border the Missouri River. Last year, actually, a year ago today, Missouri River paddlers, which is 16 hours strong throughout the country, chose, they had a rendezvous here. And they just fell in love with the place. About a month later, I was asked if they could, they chose this as the finest on the river. And that was quite a compliment. But later on, I got seven flags from seven different states, and we fly them proudly down there. So, when it comes to the river, I guess you could say Jeff City's on the map. This is the parking lot. These are normally what we call grand crews. I call them support crews, because it's like a family thing, and it's pretty exciting when they see their paddler coming in, and they get pretty excited. Here we have, yeah, there's Chick-fil-A, right? And American Water had their water display up there. Big Boy, the log there again. And of course, there's some great pictures taken from a drone. In the rear back there is Dale Sanders. The other two are legend paddlers in itself. They made it four-man sup. Dale Sanders is the 81-year-old on the back, and I assure you, he pushed those younger fellows pretty hard coming down the river. It was supposed to be four, but one couldn't make it. A nice shot of the Capitol building, you can see the bottom of some canoes and kayaks turned up on the sandbar. One of the big features, and we couldn't have pulled it off without the fire department, because we had to have water, was the shower. Very few showers along this river. So, and it's cooling off his neck and maybe some other parts of his body. This was a get-together of a rendezvous. That was, when was that, Rick? Doggone. It was in the fall, I think of last year. A group, a rendezvous of the Missouri River paddlers group. This is a local lady named Janice Morland, 7th grade school teacher here at Middle School. She won the kayak canoe award, it's a worldwide award, three years ago. She did source to sea, that would be from Three Forest, Montana, to the Gulf of Mexico. Just this past Friday, she just did the whole Mississippi River. And I think her next challenge is Yukon. But quite a lady. Some of you might remember the visitors we had on the river that did, from Continental Bay, all the way down to the Gulf of Mexico, and they came in front of the council a year ago. Some of you might recall. If you could read their blog, and I just showed it to the city administrator and to Rick, they still talk about Jeff City, the hospitality, the council meeting, being acknowledged by the mayor. I believe there was a medallion there, wasn't there? Yeah? And the one from Wales. They just couldn't imagine what a journey could consist. They still talk about Jeff City. So, the council, we'll be sure you get what she said in her blog, I think, saying pretty proud. Well, let me just say a few words about the river. Whether the river or the events at that river's important to any particular person is not really relevant. What is relevant is the people, or your constituents. I wish you could see, because you won't see it on the TV, and you won't see pictures of the family reunions over there. The senior couples, and I mean senior couples, holding hands, walking down there. And I think when they leave, they've been doing that for 60 years, they're still in love. It's a pretty good feeling. The kids with their wagons and their parents, their little plastic buckets and their sandbar shovels, building castles in the sand, you might say. The Sunday school sessions that's held down there at Big Boy. The baptisms, yes, I've seen it. The memorial services, and the church service, and the office meetings. It's not really a place that we say is for boating or paddling. It's a people place. All types of people. The people you see in this MR 340, they're not exceptional or special people. They're ordinary, common people. They just accept the challenge that a lot of people won't. I wouldn't. No way in the world where you catch Joe Wilson paddling 340 miles, especially in the dark. So, again, I'll invite you to come over to the place. You'll find that breeze going across the river into the trees and the swing, they tell me is about 10 to 15 degrees cooler than what is outside, because it has to come across the river, I suppose. It's a family place, it's a people place. And I think we could do some more things over, make it even more so, make Jeff City stand a little taller. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joe, and we appreciate you being such a good ambassador for Jefferson City to our river visitors. Thank you. All right. Item 8 is announcements by mayor, council, and staff. And first, I do want to thank Councilman Rick Mahalovich for filling in for me at the last City Council meeting. I appreciate that. And I just have one announcement, but it's very important to remember tomorrow is Election Day. So, I want to remind everybody to vote. Definitely, that's, it's always important. Tomorrow, we do have the city's half-cent sales tax renewal also on the ballot, along with some other county races as well. So, please remember to vote tomorrow, Tuesday, August 2nd. The council committees, there are four standing committees, and I'll mention to the Scouts, if you go on the city's website, www.jeffersoncitymo.gov, you can see a calendar of when our committees are and also learn more about the city. I do want to call on Drew Hilpert to give us an update on the TIF.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Truman TIF was tentatively scheduled to come before the council tonight, but we're still working on getting all the documents signed and having the agreements all done. So, the tentative plan is to be at the next council meeting, which is the 15th, right? Yep, 15th. And then to be first read, and then voted on, on the 6th, September 6th. It's not, because it's the holiday on the Monday, will actually be on a Tuesday. Of course, you know, we still have to get all the agreements signed and everything, but that's the tentative plan.
Thank you. Also, Councilman Rick Prather will give us an update on the budget meetings.
Yes, we'll be having our next budget meeting this Thursday at 5:30 in City Hall at this room.
Great. Thank you. Any other council announcements or committee announcements? Okay. Item B, Rental Facade Program Applications Being Accepted. Mrs. McMillan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city offers a facade improvement program as part of the Neighborhood Reinvestment Act, and this rental facade program helps landlords with rental properties by paying up to 50% of the cost of improvements to facades of eligible buildings, and that's a single-family and duplex, by paying up to $5,000 per unit, up to $10,000. So, the minimum project cost would have to be $10,000. So, the goal is to improve the exterior appearance and condition of residential rental properties in the Old Town or East Side districts that were constructed prior to 1959. There are appearance guidelines that must be met, and so those applications for eligible projects will be accepted through Friday, August 12th. If you know of anyone who can take advantage of those programs, please refer them to our department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McMillan. Any questions for her? Councilman Mahalovich?
What's our total budget for that? How many projects could we support?
We can probably support, it depends on the total project, probably two or three. So, it's a small program.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Okay. Item 9, Lincoln University Student Representative Update. And it is summer break, but Council Representative Jonathan Jackson still is representing, but not here this evening. But I do want to mention that the Blue Tiger Athletic Club is still taking memberships, so if anybody wants to support in that manner, they can. And also, he is working on the Blue Tiger Fest, which will be held in the downtown area when the students come back. Anything else going on at Lincoln, Mr. Graham? Okay. Item 10, Presentations from the Gallery on Specific Bills or Resolutions. And if the individuals are limited to five minutes, so if anyone is here this evening to speak, actually, we didn't have anybody sign up. So, and I don't, I want to make sure we didn't miss anyone, but we did have the signup sheet out there before the meeting. All right. Item 11, Consent Agenda. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, Bills Introduced, 2016-29. Mrs. Powell?
An ordinance amending Chapter 29, Sewers and Sewage Disposal, Section 29-132, dispersal of funds of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, to reflect actual sewer bond covenants and city financial policies.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is just to clarify language in this chapter, so that an amount equal to the requirement of any active sewer, sewage revenue bond covenant is deposited into a replacement account. And that is separate from any other fiscal reserve that we have established by the city financial policy.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Miller? Thank you. 2016-30.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, adopting a budget and personnel classification plan for the city for the period of November 1, 2016, to October 31, 2017. And appropriate and appropriating money in the city treasury to pay the cost of operating the city government during that period in accordance with the budget.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller.
The 2016-17 operating budget has been recommended for approval by the mayor. The proposed general revenue budget is projected to be $32,227,269.08, and the total City of Jefferson budget to be $60,820,613.51.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? And this is being introduced at this time, and then there will be subsequent budget meetings, as we've had before, as Councilman Prather mentioned, and so it may end up on the informal calendar, sometimes it does, just so the public knows, if they have comments, they're welcome to contact their councilmen, but sometimes it, it's not something that would necessarily be voted on, as is typical with our bills pending, it would be on the informal until such time that the council is ready to bring that forward and vote on that. Item 2016-31.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, providing for the levy of city taxes and establishing the rate of taxation for the City of Jefferson, Missouri, for the year 2016.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller.
This is to establish the property tax rates for the calendar year 2016. There is no proposed tax rate increase. The general fund proposed tax rate is 46 cents, and the fireman's retirement is proposed at 9 cents, 0.0961 cents.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you. 2016-32.
An ordinance amending Section 19-401 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Schedule G, Stop Intersections, Subparagraph B, Other Specified Intersections of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, pertaining to Georgetown Road and New Bedford Court.
Thank you. Mr. Bangy?
Yes, Madam Mayor. This would be a bill that would authorize the installation of three additional stop signs at the entrance of New Bedford Court, Georgetown Road, or Georgetown, onto the main road, which is South Country Club. There seemed to be some confusion among the residents of the, of the subdivision about who should be using the intersection, and particularly because of the very short leg that goes between Georgetown Road and South Country Club. There seemed to be some confusion there, and so the Transportation and Traffic Commission looked at this and recommended that some additional stop signs be placed at the intersection to help alleviate that confusion.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. 2016-33.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $148,225 agreement with Pure Technologies U.S. Incorporated for the Force Main Evaluations Project.
Thank you. Mr. Bangy?
Yes, this is a, kind of a newer technology. It makes use of a small cylindrical ball that actually gets inserted into the force main, and it has, it produces sonar waves, and basically can determine if there's any defects in the sewer pipe, as the ball is pushed along by the, by the sewage in the pipe itself. And so, a very non-destructive way of getting information about the condition of our sewer pipes.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. 2016-34.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $1,109,803.57 agreement with Jefferson Asphalt Company for the 2016 million overlay project.
Thank you. Mr. Bangy?
Yes, this is, every year, we have a project to overlay various streets within the city, and so this is the installment for this year. We had one bid on the project Jefferson Asphalt, which is typical for us. And there's also, so there'll be various city streets that get overlaid, and there's also a portion of that which will do some overlay over at the airport, about $33,000 worth of, of money there. The rest of the money would come out of the sales tax that's been set aside for street overlays.
Thank you. Any questions? 2016-35.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $201,135.51 agreement with Musselman and Hall Contractors LLC for the 2016 Fog Seal Project.
Thank you. Mr. Bangy?
Yes, again, this project is actually somewhat in conjunction with the overlay, although not specifically. What we're attempting to do with this contract is to actually prolong the life of some of our more recently overlaid streets, and so essentially what happens with an asphalt street, the sunlight actually pulls some of the oils out of the asphalt and degrades them, and so that's what begins the degradation of the street. And so, the fog seal is basically going in and reapplying those oils to the surface of the asphalt to preserve the life of that asphalt.
Thank you. Any questions? 2016-36.
An ordinance amending Section 19-401 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Schedule J, Parking Prohibited, Subparagraph A of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, pertaining to portions of Woodlawn Street.
Thank you. Mr. Bangy?
Yes, this bill is, probably came to the fore because of the construction that happened on Monroe Street by Capital Region Medical Center. There's more traffic there now, and so there was some question as to what the regulations were regarding parking on Woodlawn. Some investigation led us to understand that it actually wasn't signed the way that the code had required it to be, which led to some discussions with the Traffic and Transportation Commission, and some discussions with the adjoining landowners. And what we have done is sign the southern side, which was already part of the code as being parking restricted, and then it's a modification to the northern side between Oak Street and Monroe Street to allow there to be two parking spaces there when it had been restricted completely before.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Bills pending, 2016-20.
An ordinance amending the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, Chapter 7, Boards and Commissions, Article 2, pertaining to the Environmental Quality Commission.
Thank you, Mrs. McMillan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This bill amends Chapter 7, Article 2, to provide an updated focus for the commission that includes areas of health and wellness, and also transfers its staff support to the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you. Any questions deliberation? Councilman Prather?
It got my attention that the committee has not met that often, and so often when they have met, that it has not had a quorum. I realize we're increasing numbers, but, or, I shouldn't say increasing numbers, trying to get other people on this, but are we, do we have a plan to get the ones that aren't active involved?
I, I think that if, if this bill passes, we would contact the current members to ascertain their level of interest in the refocused committee, and, you know, if they're, if they're willing to participate, give them an opportunity to do so. But, Gail Strope, actually, her department works with assigning or vetting those potential new members, so I'd work with her to ascertain whether those existing members want to remain on the committee.
Thank you. Councilman Mahalovich?
I originally had concern regarding this, just, why didn't we just abandon the, the committee if it failed to do its work? But, under this rewrite and efforts made at Cap Region for Wellness, probably the name of the committee is wrong, but the, the actions are right, so after having it explained to me, I, I feel a lot better about it.
Great. Better committee deliberation? Okay. Mrs. Powell, roll call, please.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Bill passes, 2016-21.
An ordinance amending the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, by updating Chapter 7, Boards and Commissions, Article 16, Cultural Arts Commission, to coordinate the efforts of the Cultural Arts Commission with the Parks, Recreation, and Forestry Department.
Thank you, Mrs. McMillan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This bill also amends the code to promote the support and coordination of activities with the Cultural Arts Commission and Department of Parks, Recreation, and Forestry.
Be happy to answer any questions. Any questions? Okay. Mrs. Powell, roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Bill passes, 2016-22.
An ordinance amending the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, pertaining to grant application and acceptance requirements, to allow the city administrator to approve and accept grants which do not require more than a $5,000 match in funds by the City of Jefferson, and amending the financial policy of the City of Jefferson.
Thank you. Councilman Costalis?
Yes, I'd like to amend this. Currently, the administrator can do contracts up to $25,000, like to set this at the same level that will expedite a lot of grants, especially for public works.
Thank you. And unless there are any objections?
Well, it would require a vote, because it's an amendment.
That's right. Thank you. So, at this time, we'll have a vote on the amendment. Mrs. Powell? And this is a vote to accept the amendment, correct?
Right, to amend the bill.
And then we'll take up the bill.
Which you could do voice or roll call, whichever you prefer.
Okay, all in favor, we'll do all in favor then on the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so one opposed to the amendment, and the rest in favor. So, at this time, we'll take up Mr. Costalis, Councilman Costalis's amended version, which changes the $25,000. So, at this time, is there any council deliberation?
Do you want me to present?
Yes. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you. This, currently, all applications for grants, no matter how small, have to be approved by the city council, which has some, sometimes a detrimental effect as we, as we try to make things timely, is we don't always have a, a long time to make out grant applications, and it, what ends up happening is we frequently, or occasionally have violated the rule, go ahead and made the application because there wasn't time for the council. So, this was a discussion that was had at the administration committee, and they talked about some remedies for it, and the, I think that what came out of that was a discussion that there ought to be a threshold where the city administrator can make the application, as long as, the concern that the committee had, I think, was a, they didn't, they weren't concerned about it until there was a match. So, then the question was, what's the appropriate match? And what you just amended tonight would be to say that the, it's a $25,000 or less match, so it, as Councilman Costalis mentioned, it's basically the same thing as this contractual authority, which logically, you think, makes, makes some sense. But, the council will still be in the grant process, they'll still have to approve those things, but just not the application, except, except the money and such. And we had to amend the financial policy as well as the ordinance, because they both reflect that.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Hilpert, or any council deliberation? Councilman Prather?
I am not against $5,000, and my understanding is that the majority of these contracts are going to be around $5,000, so that's why I'm opposed to raising it to $25,000.
Any further council comments? Okay. Mrs. Powell, roll call, please.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
No.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Bill passes, 2016-23. An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $1,116,588.93 agreement with Mira Excavating LLC for the Hazelton Pump Station Force Main and Gravity Sewer Contract A.
Thank you. Mr. Bangy?
Yes, this contract would authorize the construction of the Hazelton Pump Station. There are many discussions about this project in conjunction with the development that's happening off of Hazelton Drive. But, this, this contract is, will allow us to take offline an old pump station that was built, I think it's nearing 100 years or more in life, and we have a lot of problems with that, with that system, sanitary sewer overflows, EPA agreements that we would move forward with the construction of a new, a new pump station. And so, this bill would authorize the construction of that pump station.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Mahalovich?
I have a sort of related question, and this may be for Drew. What happens to the force main as it exists in the neighbors, in the East Circle, East, East Circle residences? What happens to that?
Right, there's a force main, the, the existing pump station actually pumps sewage up through the backyards of the folks who live on East Circle. There is an easement that exists over that line, but it's rather narrow, I think it's about a 10-foot wide easement. I don't know that we had any particular plans with that, although I would think if, if folks desired for that to be vacated, I don't believe that the city would have any particular reason to keep it.
And in vacating that, would they, would we have to return it to normal, or we would just abandon it?
It would be our intention just to abandon the line in place, and, and just not use it anymore. So, we wouldn't take it out or disrupt any of the yards, it would just be, we would stop using it.
It should be very good news for those folks, I think. And I would also support us abandoning that if we have no, no other use for that easement in the future.
Thank you. Any further council discussion or questions? All right. Roll call, please.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Bill passes, 2016-24. An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $321,087 agreement with Aplex Incorporated for the East Circle Sanitary Sewer Main Replacement Contract B.
Thank you. Mr. Bangy?
Yes, this is related to the previous bill. The, there's a gravity sewer that feeds down East Circle to the old pump station, and so, again, it, like the pump station, is very old, and somewhat convoluted in the way that it handles the sewage. And so, this bill would authorize a contract to reconstruct that line, which would then tie into the new lines that are being constructed for the pump station.
Thank you. Any questions or council deliberation? Councilman Mahalovich?
Another issue that has occurred on East Circle has been multiple water main breaks, and it, I hope that Missouri American Water is aware of our digging and can improve their lines in the same timeframe as, as, I know that you all coordinate these events, but, but that's a good time, because there's been a ton of problems in that neighborhood.
As you say, we do coordinate our projects with the various utilities. I'm not entirely for sure the extent to which Missouri American has plans on this particular project, but certainly something that we could mention to them to ensure that they have opportunity.
Thank you. Any further comments? Roll call, please.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Bill passes, 2016-25. An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $299,997 agreement with Concrete Solution LLC for the sidewalk and parking improvements East High Street and Adam Street project, and the approval of funding for said construction.
Thank you. Mr. Bangy?
Yes, this is a project that's going to take place just across the street here from City Hall, around what is known as the Baptist Building. There was an agreement that was entered into with the Baptist Convention several months ago regarding the sale of a parking lot that the city owned, and part of that agreement for the sale of that property obligated the Baptists, the Baptist Convention, to participate in the cost of a street scape project around their building. And so, the plan would be to reconstruct the sidewalks along the 400 block of Adam Street and the 300 block of, or do I have that backwards? Along Adam Street next to the jail, and then in front of their building on High Street. And so, the Baptist Convention folks are paying for half of that project, and then the remainder of the funds are being made up by the proceeds from the sale of the parking lot, and then a portion of that is also coming from the sidewalk fund within the half-cent capital improvement sales tax. improvement sales tax. And so this bill before us this evening not only approves the construction, but it also arranges the funds in the right accounts so that we can use those to pay for this project.
Thank you. Any questions or council discussion? Roll call, please.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Costalis.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hussy.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Bill passes, 2016-26.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $133,523.75 agreement with Tweet House Excavating Company Incorporated for Fire Station 1 and 4 Pavement Replacement Project.
Thank you, Mr. Bangy.
Yes, this project is something that the city had worked on with our fire department. We have a number of issues with the pavements in front of the stations, Station Number 4 and Station Number 1. Some of that pavement is saving and cracking, and we also have some issues with ADA access into Fire Station 1, and some water issues over Fire Station 4 that we're also looking to correct with this project. And so essentially, what you would see is new pavement in front of those fire stations and new sidewalks around them as part of this contract.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion? Roll call, please.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Costalis.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hussy.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Bill passes, 2016-27.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a development agreement with Special Olympics Missouri Incorporated SOMO, pertaining to the construction of a sanitary sewer to the SOMO multipurpose training facility.
Thank you, Mr. Bangy.
Yes, one last time. Yes, this is an agreement between the city and the developer to install a sewer line to serve the new Special Olympics site, which is there, located near the intersection of Route B and Highway 54. The sewer will tie into a line that was built as part of the pump station that was built several years ago. Basically, the agreement allows for a cost of up to $300,000 to be borne by the city for the construction of the sewer line that will be due upon its completion. And then, at that point, then there's a requirement placed on the...for the development of the building itself, and so the building would need to be online by February of 2019. If not, then the $300,000 would come back to the city.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion? Roll call, please.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Costalis.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hussy.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Bill passes. Nothing on the informal. Under resolutions, we have RS 2016-17.
A resolution authorizing the City of Jefferson to apply for the Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over DWI Enforcement Campaign Grant.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Mr. Sergeant Clark, please.
Captain Clark, but that's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Captain Clark.
That's okay. The police department has the opportunity to apply for a MoDOT grant that would provide funding up to $1,200 to pay overtime to conduct the DWI campaign during August 19 through September 5, 2016. There are no matching...no matching requirements for this grant.
Thank you, Captain Clark. And do we have any questions or council discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Costalis.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hussy.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Item 16, Presentations from the Gallery on Other Topics. Individuals are limited to three minutes without exception. Presentations may be made from the podium unless other accommodations requested. Welcome, we have Kent Montgomery regarding city surplus property.
Just hand him here, or I'll hand him down. Thank you.
I don't know that I have enough presentations for everybody, but I'm Kent Montgomery. I'm the local representative from Purple Wave Auction. I know most of you don't know me, so I went ahead on the first page there and tried to list some of my local customers. And the reason I am here tonight is to ask for your consideration, the next bid process on liquidating your surplus equipment and fleet. The one I put at the top of the list, and probably everybody knows, Cole County, they're a local customer of ours, Callaway County, Miller County, Boone County, MoDOT Oaks, I heard Jefferson Asphalt, Emery Sap. Those are a few of the people that utilize us. Why do they use us? Pretty simple. It's the Internet. No transportation. We come to you. There's no waiting with us. We have sales every week. There's no advertising expenses. We take care of all the advertising, all the marketing, all the listings. I take care of all that. We collect all the funds, all the proceeds. We pay you. A lot of cities do it different ways, but we will take care of the title work for you as well at no additional charge. We have greater returns. We have over 196 countries that are buyers with our service, hundreds of thousands of customers nationwide. We can help you manage your fleet, whether you've got one piece or hundreds, thousands. So if you have one asset that you need to sell one week and six more, and so on and so forth, so we can help manage that process for you, as opposed to having a once-a-year type sale. There's no worries. Nothing ever leaves your site until we collect the money for it. So it's pretty well guaranteed that, you know, everything we do is going to sell, and we collect the money for you. I know you didn't give me about three minutes, but I want to make it quick. So I appreciate your consideration at your next budget meeting or your process for bid.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery, and I would ask, typically, I think what you would do is register with maybe our purchasing department with Mrs. Stevenson, and I'm not sure if you've had a chance yet to give your information to her, or would there be any other?
Oh, yes.
Is that the best way probably to refer?
I know Terry knows me on a first-name basis. I've been talking to her for about two years now.
Okay, great. Thank you. And are there any other presentations from the gallery this evening? Okay. Item 17, Council and Staff Discussion on Presentation Topics. Any council discussion? Okay. Item 18, any new business?
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a request.
Yes.
I'd like a picture with the council. I never get these pictures.
All right. Come on up here, Drew.
Can we have a vote?
Madam Mayor, do you have a city coin for him?
Yes. I do. I'll come down, and should...do we want everybody to line up here?
All of us here?
All of us here? Okay. All right, I'll come down, and let's get everybody up here.
All right. We don't have all of us here, so.
Yeah, let's photoshop some people.
Right, right, right.
Carl, stand on your tiptoes in between your eyes.
There you go.
Right.
Glenn.
Are you in here?
Drew, don't you want Steve to be here?
I know.
Steve. Be a part of it. Be a joiner.
Are we supposed to smile because we like you? Smile because you're leaving.
All right, let's get one memo with the standing.
Well, I was going to make it a fast meeting for Drew, but no, I'm very happy for you, Drew. Congratulations, and that will be on Facebook tonight. Unfinished business, approval of closed session minutes. Is there a motion?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Costalis.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hussy.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Motion passes. Well, Drew, we're going to miss you. Good luck. Happy for you. Congratulations. Thank you for your service, and I will see everyone else at the polls tomorrow to vote, and I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.